Just put the camera on that. You don't have it on me, do you? I'm like, put it over there.
Tell me when you're ready. You're ready?
And this being right here is dangerous.
All right. Are we ready?
Yes.
All right, so I will now halt order the March 20th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. I don't see anyone from the community here, so I assume we have no community comments and Beth, you have no one online. So we will move forward to the superintendent's comments.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a few updates as we get together, all three committees shortly. For those of you who have not, well, I'll be circulating the video for the industry panel that we had two weeks ago. We had 10 community members and alum from Dover Sherburne in Boston come and talk about how they got to their current career. And it's not always a straight line and it's all about resiliency and networking and how they foresee their careers changing in the future with AI and what does that mean for our K to 12 students as we prepare them for college and work and all of those things. It was fantastic. Everybody was raving about it and in fact, Denny and I had a mini workshop yesterday with our K to 12 instructional leaders. And as preparation for that, we had them watch the video and then we had really rich conversation with our department chairs and curriculum leaders as a result of that. So when the video comes out in my newsletter, make sure you take a peek. Congratulations to the cast and crew of Mamma Mia. It was such a fascinating show and as Mrs. Miller just said, certainly those songs were stuck in my head all week, which is a nice problem to have because they are such great songs. Congratulations to the DS hockey team too, state champions. Super exciting. The college panel, similar to the industry panel, is coming up on March 27th. So we'll have representatives from the admissions offices at small and large rural and suburban schools talking about how the process is changing and shifting, especially now that AI can write college essays. And so what does that mean for us preparing our students and making sure that they can show their full potential, whether that's through internships or portfolios or projects and those sorts of things. And lastly, earlier this week, a ad went out for a challenge excessive around belonging on April 3rd. So encouraging all of you to think about coming and encouraging your neighbors to come. I think that's going to be a great event with two fabulous speakers. As you know, Unit B is now part of the Dover Sherburne Education Association and we're going to begin negotiations next week. We have our first planning meeting, so thank you to Kate and Mark for serving as your regional representatives on that committee. We'll certainly keep the rest of you updated as things move along. And just a couple personnel updates that I think are important to note. The first is our Director of Technology, Anthony Vertaco, has resigned and we thank him for all of his service to Dover Sherburne. And so we'll be posting for that. So stay tuned as we start to bring in candidates who can, you know, be similar in our vision for Dover Sherburne, but also continue to move us forward. And secondly, the world of world language teachers is quite small these days. We have really been struggling as a district and I can only imagine other districts are as well, finding teachers to teach world language, specifically Spanish. Both Pine Hill for one of their plus positions and one middle school position, both are on their third or fourth educator this year.
This year?
This year. Primarily because the middle school position is a long-term sub-position for someone who's on leave, which, you know, it's a risk to take. It's because it's a one-year position. So are you going to leave your current position to go somewhere and hope that the job continues with no guarantee? And then the middle school, I mean, the elementary position, just we haven't found somebody who wants to stay. One did stay at Pine Hill because they just needed a lesser position. So they reduced themselves from a 1.0 to a 0.5 or 6 in another position. Another, you know, I still think we're seeing the effects of the pandemic on kids and adults and it's just been tough. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. We know it's not ideal and we'll continue to do our best to hire the most qualified students that they have a continuous rigorous experience.
Do you have any idea why, in particular world languages?
Smaller subset?
I guess, maybe.
What?
Maybe a smaller subset.
And these folks have to be certified in elementary or middle school, right? They're not just, you can't just bring in someone who's amazing and fluent in Spanish.
Well, there are emergency licenses now, especially after the pandemic. We're seeing a lot of people apply for those and the commissioner and Desi continue to offer that. So we do have some. Yeah, it's just difficult and, you know, my daughter is in a situation where in her eighth grade Spanish class, she's on her fourth teacher. So I understand it both from an educator and a parent perspective about how disruptive that can be. We've actually used an outside agency to bring us two of those educators because we couldn't find them on our own, no matter how many trees we shook or how many times we posted it.
Wow.
And even in that arena, that's where already on our second, actually our third, the one never really.
Well, one never showed up.
Where are the closest programs? I mean, like Birmingham State and Simmons, do they have?
Good question. We can look.
I'm just curious. I know it was a big department at Teachers College.
Well, our middle school teacher is returning next year into her permanent position. So that will hopefully solve that problem. And we have a new class teacher starting this week who will hopefully stay on board next year. Fingers crossed.
That's unfortunate and interesting, but really unfortunate. All right, so we all set?
That's it.
Okay, so we have two discussion items. The first one is the changes, proposed changes to the accept collaborative agreement. And Beth, do you want to just give us a little background on why we're looking at that?
Sure. So as you know, as a district, we belong to two collaboratives that are available for local districts to pool together their resources, not only for buying power when it comes to buses and materials, but also when we don't have a large number of students who need a specific special education program. Students from Wayland and Weston and Dover Sherburne can come together in these collaboratives and get the resources and supports they need and have like peers. So we belong to Accept and Natick and Tech and Walpole. And we have to assign, we sign agreements with both of them when we enter into a partnership with them. The agreement that Tech and Accept and Natick currently has for their partner districts to sign hasn't been reviewed since 2015. So they worked with Desi, who is very careful about oversight of collaborative programs, to provide updates and recommendations for their updated agreement. So you'll see the red line version in your packet. All of the superintendents who serve on the Board of Directors for Except have already reviewed those and approved them. And now we're bringing it back to our committees for your approval. So tonight is your first read and we'll look at it again on April 2nd when all three committees are together. I'll tell you that there are no significant changes. There are just a lot of wordsmithing or clarification. Throughout the document, the only semi-significant change is that Westboro is joining the collaborative, which is only a positive thing because there's more students, more resources, more financial implications for us.
Great. Go ahead.
Sorry, are we finished?
Yeah.
I just was curious and maybe you just answered, who did the drafting? Was Desi?
Desi with the Director of the collaborative and then passed it through the Board first and then we approved it. No, it's before you to approve.
Other questions? All right, so now we move on to continued discussion of the 24-25 calendar. The goal tonight, okay, we're not voting on anything. The goal is for us as a committee to share with one another our thoughts and, you know, what we are thinking in terms of this because, so that hopefully it will facilitate a smoother conversation when we get to our meeting on April 2nd and are going to be voting, okay? And so we'll see if we have some sort of consensus tonight. I'm really sorry that Angie and Maggie aren't here because I respect both of their, I respect everyone's opinion, but I respect their opinions and it's a shame that I can't hear from them. But hopefully we'll see if there is a consensus or if the discussion here helps us to move toward the consensus. I want to say two things and then I want to have Beth say something. The things I want to say are, I want to explain the logistics of this, which is, I haven't discussed these logistics yet with the chairs. But what I am going to suggest, and I am only one voice of four people in the chairs and of 16 people here. But the committee had three proposals, basically roll back to the mandated, state mandated holidays, leave the status quo, or add three holidays, Eid, Diwali and Lunar New Year, okay? So what I'm going to suggest, in order for us to make any change at all, all three, we have to get a majority vote in favor of all three committees, okay? I'm going to suggest that if we do not have a majority vote of all three committees, either roll back or add three, that, and that we vote on this to begin, at the beginning, that we maintain the status quo, okay? Because if we then get into votes on, do we maintain the status quo and we don't get a majority on that of the three committees, then it will throw the calendar into a really, not an ideal situation, a really bad situation, okay? And I think that's reasonable. So that's what I'm going to suggest. If anyone thinks that's a horrible idea, tell me. But that's what I'm going to suggest. The other issue that's come up is the issue of, are we going to continue to have Good Friday as a holiday? If we do a rollback, Good Friday is not a holiday. It's a school day because it's not a mandated holiday. If we have the status quo, it is a full day off school because that's what the status quo is. So the only time that Good Friday could at all come into play would be if all three committees vote in favor of adding three holidays. The task force recommended that if the three committees vote that way, Good Friday becomes a half day, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but there are other alternatives. For example, we could say it's within the superintendent's discretion to come to us each year with a calendar and decide based on the holidays that year whether Good Friday should be a holiday or not, okay? I'm just throwing things out there. And then there's the obvious thing, there are the obvious of no Good Friday should be off the calendar or no Good Friday should be a full day, okay? But that discussion does not have to happen unless we vote to add three holidays, okay? Because on the other two, so the other thing I'm going to suggest is that we hold all conversation about Good Friday until we come to a decision on the three proposals. Go ahead.
Can I ask two clarifying questions?
Anything.
So if we have a half day on Good Friday, it still counts as a school day?
Yes.
Okay, and the reason to give the superintendent discretion years forward on Good Friday would be looking at the total school days? So for example, if other holidays fall on a weekend, okay?
And monitoring attendance, you know, if all of a sudden you move to an early release day on Good Friday or a full day of school on Good Friday and we realize that there's a substantial number of teachers or students missing and we reach that threshold of not being able to maintain, you know, education, then we'd have to look at that.
I just want to make sure.
Right, right, exactly. So, and I think there's, there may be other ideas, okay? I don't know what they are, but those are just ones that I thought of. So that's.
And I brought this up before, but I will say half day, if staff don't get a half day in our calendar, a half, an early release day for staff is a full day.
Right.
So that needs to be flushed out, I think, before that is considered.
Yeah, 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 but that's only, that's exactly.
Be careful about that.
I agree with you and Dawn, that's exactly why I think we should hold all conversation about Good Friday until, you know, you made my point, until we see if we need to, okay? All right, so Beth, why don't you, you're going to.
Share some of the kind of agreements or recommendations that regardless of how we move forward, the task force thought that's not at the school committee level, but within the district, things that we need to do regardless of decisions. So, and this might help speed along some of the conversation because we've already landed on these recommendations. The first is making sure that, I think I closed the document, but that's okay. Making sure that while we're in school, we provide opportunities for all students to learn about all of these holidays and their value to individuals and to the world. The second is that we make sure that students, families and faculty are aware of the policy already in place around attendance and assignments and workload on holidays and that we're clear with all of those groups, how to access, leniency, when to give tests, when not to give tests, so that we're all working on the same page and it doesn't become a point of friction. The third recommendation is to continue to work with our athletic director, high school principal and all of our extracurricular leaders to make sure that we're thinking about whether we have a day off from school or not, how that's going to impact activities and athletics. So just being mindful of that for our students. And lastly, there's strong support from students, families and teachers. And it didn't matter their background, their religion, all felt strongly that the day before Christmas should be a day off from school, not because of religious purposes necessarily, but because it extends the winter break. And so the recommendation from a task force based on the overwhelming data is that we start winter break, our December break, on the 24th, if not earlier, depending on where that falls.
You know, that's interesting. Then we, the question that we're going to have to talk about is if we do, if we do anything other than the status quo, if we do a rollback, what do we do about December 24th and how do we feel about that? And the same if we do, if we go with those three holidays. And I think with the rollback, it's almost more of an issue.
The committee's recommendation is regardless of which of the three you go with, that we start, if the 24th already isn't baked into the December break, we add that on as the Friday before.
I hear you.
It is already, that's the status quo. It is already, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe then we might think about, do we include that at the beginning? When we talk about, when we vote on, you know, if we don't take rollback or add, then we're going to be at the status quo and that's it. Maybe we also vote, no matter which of the three we do, December 24th is a day off at the outset before we vote on anything else. I don't know. How do people feel about that?
Yeah, I mean, if the rollback is removing religious holidays, technically it's Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur and Good Friday.
And the day before Christmas.
But that's, Christmas Eve is, is that a religious holiday, I wonder, or just?
Well.
I know it's not a federal holiday and I know it's a holiday we observe for convenience and all other towns are observing it. Is it religious? I don't know.
That's a good question and I don't know either because at Christmas Eve.
A lot of places have services Christmas Eve. A lot of Christians.
Have, but they have it Christmas Eves. They don't have it Christmas Eve Day, okay? For example, I'll give you an example. You see what I'm saying? Because Rosh Hashanah, let's say Rosh Hashanah. Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish holidays start at sundown. So you don't have that day before the sundown off because it's not a holiday. So would you then likewise, you know, as a corollary to that, would you say then that day is not a holiday even if Christmas Eve is? Do you see what I'm saying? But that's probably something we'll want to talk about.
But I think, and my point of asking though is to say, almost like, I think of Christmas Eve as the same as Christmas Day to an extent. Like those are now seen as holidays, not even for religious purposes, but purely because they are now logistical. And, you know, one is a federal holiday, but the other one is logistical. If we were trying to run school on Christmas Eve, we would not be able to because every other town would not be running school that day.
And I would disagree with you. That I believe that Christmas is a religious holiday and it's a religious holiday that many people who are Jewish don't celebrate. I didn't celebrate Christmas in any way, shape or form growing up. So I'm not, that doesn't impact my belief about having no school on December 24th. I actually am in favor of having no school December 24th because I don't think that that's a religious holiday. But I want to be real clear. I do believe that Christmas is a religious holiday. So.
I agree. It is and it's a federal holiday, right?
Yes, it is a federal holiday, which.
It happens to be both and we have to observe the federal holidays.
Yes, you're right. You're right. All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I haven't done this at all this year, but I'm going to do it tonight, which is I'm going to tell you what I think. And because I actually, you know, I had a conversation with Beth and a couple of different, you know, people who are not on this committee. And several people said to me, well, I could convince myself of any one of the three proposals. And I believe that there is merit to all of them. However, I feel, and you're going to all be shocked by this, I feel really strongly in favor of adding three holidays. And my reason for that comes largely out of our equity audit, which we did two years ago, which was an extensive audit where we had statistically significant data, okay? And I'm gonna, I just pulled down a couple of things from it that I want to share with you and remind you of. The audit said that despite important signs of change, school cultures at DS still center white, Christian, neurotypical, affluent academically and athletically successful students. They also said that they repeatedly heard that Christianity was the norm. A student said they were discussing comparing Islam with other Middle Eastern countries, other religions in the Middle East. And this student said, the whole curriculum is delivered from a perspective that we all know about Christianity. We already understand that and now we're learning about Islam for the first term, time, and we're even learning about Judaism for the first time. There are some questions in the coursework like blank is to Islam as Lent is to Roman Catholicism. But there's no talk about Lent in the entire curriculum and there's no document that even mentions Lent. Then they say, we heard multiple examples of overt antisemitism, including slurs and Nazi references and a sense that antisemitism is widely tolerated in the DS community. And then with regard to the issue of ethnicity, one student said, I've probably been called every single East Asian girl's name at least once. Another student said, when I moved here, my first day, I remember I was sitting next to this girl and there's a kid who's Asian and I guess he was talking. Then she just made this joke, not to me, but I heard it, about him eating dogs. That all resonates with me and the decision that we reach here is going to impact those attitudes, I believe. The other thing that really causes me to believe that we should add these holidays is they're finding that a large majority of the community members agree, this is a time for bold consequential action for equity. And there's a strong appetite for more urgent action among the community members, okay? Adding three holidays will say to our community and the larger world, these are our values. We value diversity, equity and inclusion. It will put these holidays on the map for these kids. And rolling back particularly at a time when antisemitism is growing and getting much worse in this country will have the opposite effect, I think, at least for Jewish kids. And we all come at this with our own backgrounds and I come at it with my religious background. And I'm not, I'm not apologizing for that. But I'm saying that I think it's really important for us to, in a sense, put our money where our mouth is. And if we spent that whole time saying we want to do better on diversity, equity and inclusion, this is our chance. So that's, that is my view.
Thank you. I was in a very similar spot to you, with you, a month and a half ago, where I thought, we went through a thorough process of trying to gather a lot of input from community members, multiple surveys, looking carefully at the data, listening first to the students, and those are all valuable steps. We, I think, were wondering whether we need to collect more data to be more sure. And I felt at that time it was just becoming too much noise because you will not land in a place where everyone is feeling happy or heard. So I thought, then we should go to our values because the data is just noisy. Let's think about who we are and what we value. And I agree with you, diversity and equity and inclusion. I said this, you know, equity means we're going to treat all cultures basically as similarly equitable as we can. That means honor all or none of these holidays. It's either end of that spectrum, I think, that we're describing. Inclusion means favoring all, that at least were brought to our attention as these impact students in our district now. And it may change five years from now. The thing that still sits with me and I'm grappling with is the Establishment Clause. And maybe I have to understand it better, but I thought it was saying, you cannot pull school purely for religious reasons. And I know these are not all religious. Some of these are cultural reasons. But basically I was wondering then, like, what's our obligation? This is where I think the law helps me structure my thinking. And the constraints that it may put on us actually helped me realize, like, there's so much I maybe like to do and aspire to, but if there are constrictions that are law, they help guide me and Godrails, you know, are going to help for my case. So that's why I was trying to also parse out the difference between even like Christmas, Christmas Eve, Good Friday. Like I know, you know, some of those may be religious, some may not. They're all taken off currently. And sometimes it's for convenience sake, other times it's because it's a really important moment and it's too disruptive to hold school that day. I mean, I honestly do believe if we tried holding on some of those examples, we would not have enough staffing our students. So I think I'm still really grappling now with either adding them on. And I said, you know, we have fewer snow days. So like, it's not like it's going to dip too far into summer if we add on. Or status quo because that is more aligned with this Establishment Clause anyway, in my understanding of it anyway. And also I think that it's almost like snow day. At a certain point, it's like calling a snow day. Like we can call the snow day when enough towns are on us to call us. We in fact have to, even if we don't think it's really going to snow much. That came up this year, right? And like the superintendents are always like, we have to call no school tomorrow, even though I bet I'm not pulling out the shovel because it's dominoes. And like, my only concern, I think, is if we do something that has a ripple effect on others or like vice versa for the wrong reasons or if it's nudging the law, you know, like that kind of piece. So I still need clarity around that Establishment Clause probably and how much it might confine us.
Okay, I will not address that now, but I will address it as I am the one lawyer here. Because I'm trying to not talk, which as we all know is difficult. Kate, Colleen?
So can I ask, because I was not here at the workshop, so Judy and I have, you know, she's caught me up on some things. But, because I'm still fuzzy on that too. So that would be helpful for me. I don't know, did you cover that at the workshop?
We did a bit.
A little.
And I think it was still even a little back and forth where it's like the fine line in between is where I'm trying to be sure what I'm doing right by that.
Do you want me to address it?
Well, it would be helpful for me. I, I'm feeling a little unclear and hearing you say that makes me feel better.
What the Establishment Clause says is that Congress shall establish no law, shall make no. is that Congress shall establish no law, shall make no law establishing a religion for the United States.
Right.
Okay? So then the question is, and there've been all kinds of, you know, litigation about, you know, school prayer and things like that. But if you just look at the issue of taking a day off for a holiday. Christmas was established as a federal holiday in 1870. Yes, I looked it up. And no one has, and Congress did that. And, and the Supreme Court has not struck that down as the establishment of a religion. And so I would say that giving, that based on that, giving kids the day off on a religious holiday is not the establishment of a religion. Because we've had that, Congress, and, and we're not Congress. And so there's an argument to be had that a school district isn't Congress. But even if you don't get into any of that, Congress acted and made a religious holiday, and, and it hasn't been struck down. So I think it's pretty, so for me, that says to me that the Establishment Clause is a red herring here. And that we have had, I mean, when I was growing up, we had Good Friday off, okay? And that has not been challenged. There was one case in Ohio that fell flat, and that was maybe 30 years ago. And we, in this district, for at least 19 years that I know of, and Dawn, you can tell me exactly how many, we've had Good Friday, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur off, as have many of the districts in eastern Massachusetts. And there's been no challenge to it under the Establishment Clause. So I really think that the Establishment Clause is a red herring. And that it is, we, we will, that it isn't the establishment of a religion. Okay, does that-
Yeah.
Help you guys. Okay? And, and I want to tell you something. You guys know my position here. And I don't want you to think that I'm giving you the law in a twisted way to serve my needs. Because, and, and I tried to say it as factually as I could for that very reason. And if anyone thinks I didn't do that, tell me, and I'll, you know, or if you, if you want to challenge it, I'm happy to. Because that's really important to me, you know, to be neutral when it's necessary, which this is, all right?
Yeah. Well, I would like to explain some of my thinking. I, you know, gave this a lot of, given this a lot of thought. I'm thinking about how the holidays impact school and also how the school impacts the holiday. So both, it goes both ways. It seems to affect the school most as a staffing issue, as well as a student attendance. And so what I would hope we could do is establish a threshold at which we cannot, you know, conduct business as usual in a school. So when does the staffing issue become an issue? So is there a way to pull staff at the beginning of the year and parents for anticipated religious holidays that they would want off? That way, the teachers could know in advance which students would be absent. I suggest pairing this with a light day, establishing something called the Light Day. I don't think we can just rely on our teachers to just step off the gas for a day. I really don't think we can. I hope we would be more intentional about it. I agree that we need to push in about more cultures. I, I don't think necessarily taking off, everybody getting a day off is not necessarily gonna educate them about why they have that day off. And, you know, we've had two, you know, Jewish holidays honored, and we still have antisemitic acts in the school. So to that point, I would hope we could use that time, the students who are in school, to get some education about what, what's being celebrated and why. Why is this meaningful? How do people celebrate it? So I think we do have, you know, a responsibility as a school committee to establish some boundaries on what sorts of things can be expected of students on those days if they are missing school for a religious holiday. I think that is, you know, in this, in this district, you know, challenge success is amazing, but follow through, you know, telling them, no tests, no homework, these students need this time with their family. It's, it's meaningful. They're calling people in China, they have people, you know, there's people that, that there's time zone, the issues, you know, things, reasons they need to be home. So if they, people have a greater understanding of why the students aren't at school, and there's less expectation on them, I think that we, we would do well to set a standard based on data for which days we have off and which days we don't, paired with more education and a lighter workload on those days.
So I guess my question then is, I'm not sure I understand. We have to decide for next year.
So I would be saying only the mandated holidays, the federal holidays. As, but paired with that are those exceptions for those days. So we have, you know, four. Maybe we would make 12/24, you know, don't call it Christmas Eve. Say 12/24, you know, because it has become sort of a secular purpose for not being in school that day. Staffing would probably be an issue, whether you're celebrating or not. A lot of people travel. So if it's winter break, and it means that most people won't be there on the 24th, then yeah, it's a secular reason not to have the, not to be in school. But on the two Jewish holidays and Good Friday, as well as some of the other suggested holidays that people, we anticipate our school population will be, you know, observing, then we should make sure that it's done in a, a way that allows the students to not only make up the work, but not have as much to make up, and the students who are there learning more about why these are important traditions.
May I just add two cents? Because I've looked at the data that might help clarify. The first is that, again, the survey is only as good as the number of people who completed it. So I think even if we did another survey, not everyone is necessarily gonna do it. But based on the initial survey, the faculty, there were fewer than 10 district-wide in that survey, given the feedback, that asked for anything other than Christmas Eve as a day off from school. So whether that's accurate or not, I can't say. The other piece that I wanted just to bring up, because Dawn and I have the opportunity to sit with all three committees. When Dover had this conversation last week, we talked about that idea of an undue burden, of when do you have to close school because there's not enough staff or not enough students either to provide safety or to engage in learning? So our data manager, I asked her to pull the data. So even next year, for example, January 1st falls on Wednesday of that second week of December break. So Thursday and Friday, the calendar that you already agreed to for free vacations, we are doing what every other district in this area minus Ashland is doing, which is, yes, January 1st is Wednesday. We have school on Thursday and Friday. I went back to the 2019 and 2020 when we had a similar circumstance where, okay, we had the holiday, we had a week and a half vacation. You're coming back either Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or just Thursday and Friday and looked at student attendance. And in most cases, at least, absences doubled, if not tripled. They did not come to school on January 2nd and 3rd. So if we develop a threshold with a strict number, I'm worried we're gonna start canceling school the Friday before Memorial Day, January 2nd and 3rd. So I just want to caution the committee from doing that.
Yep.
Kate?
Yeah, so this is very hard. And I am so grateful to the committee. Been on hard committees. This sounds like maybe one of the hardest that we've had in a while. So I'm grateful. Fully realize that whatever we do, we're not gonna please everybody. And I agree with, I think, I don't remember who said it. Maybe that you can see both, there are merits and, and not great things about any of these. So, but going back to what Judy led with, I do think we're gonna have to agree as the three committees on one thing. I mean, it's not even plausible to run the buses if we-
Yeah.
Right, like, so-
There has to be one count.
I-
We promise we will.
I only have one child in the system still, but at one point I had one in each school, and, anyway. So I guess I will start with, I feel extremely uncomfortable with the idea of rolling back to only federal. And I, I, I hear what everybody's saying, and it, and it makes some sense to me. I'm a Christian. I'm, I attend Pilgrim Church frequently. I am deeply uncomfortable with the fact that only Christmas is recognized in that, in the federal holidays. I know we have no control over that. I recognize that. It just, it's, it doesn't sit well with me. And I, I do have some concern, like Colleen mentioned, that, that kids really will feel that they have a day, a light day. Or, you know, I'm missing my practice, I'm missing my, my rehearsal. I love our staff, but I, I, I'm concerned about that. I mean, we've had kids who wanted to miss part of an April break to go on a, on a church service trip, and they were docked from their sport for a couple games. Like, we have a history of that. So in a perfect world, I would love to see us add the, the three holidays. I know people have made the argument, well, then, this other group's gonna come along, and this other group's gonna come along. And, and that may be, we, we don't have a crystal ball. I, me here today, that's how I feel. I don't, I, we've had people come and present really beautiful, eloquent things about their religions and cultural holidays. And, and I think they're really asking us to hear them. So that's kind of where, I think, my brain and my heart are.
Which is?
Which would be to add the three. And if it, if that wasn't gonna fly, I would, I would vote with a status quo. I'd have a very hard time with a rollback.
And I want to, Colleen, I gotta tell you, I, I love you because you are an optimist. And I've known you for a long time. And, and, and I'm more of an optimist, for example, than my husband. Who thinks everybody's just motivated by money, okay? And who's gonna make the money on this. But my experience has been that, I will give you an example, which is the first two nights of Passover. There is no way that kids can do homework because they're busy from, you know, almost when they get home from school until late at night with the religious observance. And when my kids were in school, some teachers were fine with that and gave them a break, and some didn't. And while you can, while in a perfect world, I'd love it to be a light day with no homework, and I'd love it to be a challenge success. I would love that, okay? I don't think that that's gonna happen. I, I don't trust that, that we're there at DS with a population that is so very motivated to get into college, okay? And, and I just don't think it's gonna happen because it hasn't happened in the past. I also think, for better or worse, and I, I, I feel uncomfortable saying this because I think it's a bad time to take away the Jewish holidays. And I, and I say, and that shouldn't be our motivation, okay? It shouldn't be. And, and I am someone who supports a two-state solution. And I believe that what is happening in Gaza is pretty much, let me rephrase that, is wrong, okay, with no qualifiers, okay? But not everybody views the world the way that I do. And I think that it will, it will be interpreted at this point in, in our lives, in our, in the life, in, in this, I don't want to say in history, but this year. In a way, we didn't intend it. Because I know you don't intend that. Because I know you're my friend, okay?
I think we need to think about ways we're supporting our Jewish students.
Right. Right. But all, all I'm saying is, I think that that's a consideration, okay?
It's absolutely a consideration. It's absolutely where my first instinct went.
Yeah.
You know, was not to do that. It was to add in.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking about a fair standard for these days going forward, whether, you know, are the population could change. We could have a huge immigrant population come here to Dover, and everything could change, and those days could shift. But I think that we should have a standard for how we establish, which ones we're taking, and how we're, how we're doing it fairly. I think it needs to be fair. And that's, that's my main thing. As a public school, we need to be fair, and we need to follow the law. And I think that if we have a strategy using, using, you know, we have to register every year, right? We register on the website, we register for, you know, through Aspen. If there was a question saying, do you anticipate this? I think there's ways of getting more data. I, I have a problem with partial data. I found the data very, like, it was, it was great to have some of the anecdotal stuff, but the, the numbers were not robust enough to say this is across the board. I've loved having as much data as we did. However, I think that that was the starting point. We need to more thoroughly canvass the community to find out who will be out when and who needs it. And I think that should be part of registration. Staff could be polled, you know, not, not in an informal poll. So this is where I think data can help us. I think that our values also should be guiding us. And so that's part of what, you know, the Lemon Test was saying, is that if we can establish that for a, a reason that is our, you know, our shared values that we're having these days off. But that's a conversation I think we need to have, you know, as a larger group, because we are three committees. But, you know, using data and values, that's kind of the DS way, right? Best practices. We see what other people are doing, but then we decide because we, we can. And I, I do, Judy, I think we can do better. I, I am an optimist. Because I, because I actually really think our kids, their mental health, I would love to have a mental health day that kids can take. I would love to add in a day that they can say, this is my mental health day. Staff as well. You know, and these light days would benefit kids, all of the kids. I know my daughter would love to have some pressure off. She has so much homework.
Yeah.
You know, and this is seventh grade, and it only gets more.
I know.
The anxiety in our students goes up as the grade goes up, direct proportion. So I, I just say that I don't think that we can stop just because it hasn't happened. I think we need to consider the, the effects this has on the mental health of our students, and also take that into consideration.
Well, I hear you. I, I wish that you and I, well, no, I don't. I was gonna say, I wish we were running the school district, but God forbid. No! But I, I wish, I, of all of these days, including Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, a mental health day, okay, to me is more important than Christmas, okay?
You need a mental health day after Christmas.
What?
You need a mental health day after Christmas.
But, and I hear you, and I hear you, Colleen, and you know, there are, the thing that troubles me is what Kate said, which is that Christmas is a Christian holiday. And if we want to say we are inclusive, then we need more than just Christmas. And, and that's, for me, the bottom line. And there's absolutely no way on God's earth we could not give Christmas off, okay? So, you know.
I mean, we could say we're not taking Christmas off, but we have winter break over this time.
No, you make really good points, Colleen. This is why, this is why it's so hard.
Yeah.
And maybe, maybe I've, because I do want to make it clear, like, I love our teachers.
Yeah.
We've had really primarily great experiences. But maybe I have become a little bit jaded because I've seen some of these things. I mean, you know, the, the not being able to go on your youth group service trip because you have to come back for two days of a varsity sport. It's like blows me away, but year after year.
That's what happens.
And maybe we need to change that in stronger ways. I'd be all for that.
Yeah, that needs to be, I feel like that-
The athletics, that-
I think no matter what, that needs to be changed.
Yeah.
You know, no matter- You know, no matter what, I think we can all agree. And that's part of, yeah, exactly. Mark, is there anything you want to?
Well, I mean, I, I think it comes involving helpful and I started with my views on it. Um, I guess I could lean more towards the inclusion if the Establishment Clause is not indeed restrictive the way that I was thinking it was. But I still wanna acknowledge, if we do that, we are going to, we do create a ripple effect impact on other towns and communities and vice versa. So it's, that's where I liken it to the snow days. Like, I don't wanna get into this, uh, I, I think I'd say move from data to messy, noisy, not super helpful data. Like, I was like, this is not perfect, it never will be, and we don't need more of it because it's not gonna help me, to values. And then I'd like to say to just logic. Like, logic right now is telling me where to land. And so I'm not getting emotionally connected when I say we should keep the holidays that we have. That is pure logic saying, all the schools keep them that way. We really cannot run school here. It wouldn't be fair to staff if their kids are home and they're here. So logic is saying status quo in my head right now. Values say move more to that inclusive and, and then rollback is equitable but not inclusive. So like, I don't, I'm, to be totally honest, I'm at status quo.
What you just said summarizes exactly what the problem is with making a decision. We, I think all of us, at least I know I have, gone through that, that exact same argument.
Yeah.
Okay? I, I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah.
And, and I just, you know, when we went back and forth and back and forth on school start time, right, we went through all the logistics too, um, with, and we're still dealing with that. I think our athletic director and, right, some towns are on our schedule, many aren't, and, you know, we, at that time, voted our values, I guess.
Yeah, and I have to say though, start times to me was a lot easier than decision, was a, was a much easier decision.
Research.
Because it was, exactly.
Yes, it wasn't emotional. Well, it did get emotional.
It was, yeah, yeah. But it was, it was science-based.
Yes.
And to me, having had teenagers who had sleep issues, it was, it was totally about the science. This, this, there's no good, there's no perfect answer. And I, I appreciate why people would come out each way.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else that, we've all set our views. Is there anything else that we should talk about that will help us?
I, I just wanted to say, following up on the start time thing, as a parent who, of an elementary, of elementary students who went through that and was, had a lot of concerns, I felt that one of the things, you know, actually it's been fine for my elementary school students. Turns out the research, you know, stating that younger children can shift, um, was absolutely true. And once I actually heard it from a neighbor, um, I dug in and I went, oh, okay, maybe this is gonna be okay. The problem with that process was that it had started so long before that the hearts and minds of the, of the parents that needed to be won over had not, that had not happened. There had not been outreach and with that newer crop of parents who, whose kids were maybe, you know, in the womb when the conversation started and when the research was presented. And so I think that with this process, I think we do need to make sure we're winning hearts and minds and making sure we're going to the community with, you know, um, our plan when we do have one and talking about our process and how we got to it and making sure that families have a chance to hear the process, um, so that they understand that this was not made, you know, lightly.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Yeah.
Two more data points. I'm not helping, but I'm providing additional data. So I, um, ran a query of all of our staff, K to 12, and where most of them live. So, um, I'm happy to take Medfield, native Franklin, Holliston, Norfolk, Sherburne, Westwood as having 10 or more teachers and look at their calendars. What might differ is the days during the year, but then the finish day might differ. So you're either gonna get it during or after if they're not on the same calendar. The other piece that I'll say is, um, and it's gonna, it's gonna slip my mind. Oh, I just want to remind the committee that both in the survey data as well as direct responses to either me or Diane McCroby that you might not have seen because they weren't in the data, there were some very strong feelings from elementary parents who said, okay, if we move forward after these three days and I have to work, who's gonna take care of my kid? I just don't want you to lose sight of that.
Yeah, no, I hear that, but, I'm sorry.
No, I, I was just gonna say, I hear that too. But, but there's a lot of advance notice here, right? This is not.
Yeah, I'm not advocating one way or another.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Just making sure it's on your radar.
Yeah, and also, you know, we're never gonna make everybody happy. We're not gonna serve, we're not going to meet everyone's needs. And, um, in, you know, we have to figure out what we think is best for the school district. I mean, that's sort of the bottom line. And, boy, is this hard. Yeah?
In a second, I'll share.
No, wait.
So, I mean, you were asking, I know we shared where our viewpoints on it, what I didn't yet share is NIDAM does, you know, acknowledge and try, do their best to honor Chinese New Year and Diwali and Eid, but they don't have the day off recognized. So, and Colleen, something you said earlier kind of made me think of this. You know, you can honor the holiday i- in many ways. Some of those ways also educate the students, others simply honor the holiday. Like, if it's a day off of school, it honors the, honors the day, but nobody's around to learn about it, they're all off. So we'd like to do both, right? The way that NIDAM tries it is, they do have school for Diwali and Chinese New Year, Lunar New Year. They, they have a message loud and clear, you're not giving tests tomorrow because this is a holiday, here's what's observed during this time, this is why it's meaningful to some of our students. And staff are on board with that. Like, it, it does roll pretty smoothly. And when we're in school, we, we still have pretty typical school days for the most part. I'm not sure, like, if you go into a social studies class, maybe they've broken the, the normal unit for, to honor that day. But there are things like the, you know, Mandarin Club has a Chinese New Year after school, like, events. So there were ways that NIDAM found something that worked. And basically, I'd say they, they're sticking with the status quo plan, but still now acknowledging these additional holidays in very, I think, meaningful and standardized ways, working in a comparable but much larger district. And it, I don't know, I'm, obviously I'm proud to be working there. I think they do a lot of things really thoughtfully. Um, so, that's just.
And I'll say this, if we, if we end up at status quo, I think it would behoove us to find out what they do.
Yes, yes.
As, as a first step. It would behoove us to, to, um, to do that.
Yeah.
You know, because that, that may also be a way to sort of begin a process and see where it leads us. You know what I mean? And now I'm arguing for the status quo, you might, um...
It's very hard. I have a meeting.
You know?
So how, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I didn't, were you finished with your thought?
Yes, I was just laughing.
Um, no, I know, I've been all over the map too. How do we envision, how do you envision the April 2nd meeting going? Like, similar to this kind of conversation? I mean, is there anything more that we can each be prepared that would be helpful? Or just kind of what we've already thought through and it will be, it might change by April 2nd?
So, um, Dover had this conversation last week and it was the same. There was kind of people all over the three options and some people even shifted during the meeting. Um, Sherburne, they had it on the agenda. They had three of their five members present, so it was a quorum but not a full committee and, and they didn't really engage in it. I don't know, just because they didn't have their committee or they felt comfortable with what they had already discussed. So I, uh, I'm not a chair or a member of the school committee. What I would recommend is you start with a straw poll to see where the three committees are at, whether you're even close. Do a little conversation and then do another straw poll. I don't think we should sit there for four hours until we get to consensus in the three. But the same conversation that this group had is the same conversation we had when the students were here and presented. It's the same conversation that Dover just had. So we can have this conversation 16 more times and not get anywhere.
Well, that's why I was kind of thinking of what would maybe be helpful to.
Can I, yeah, can I ask how a straw poll would work?
Well, I think just asking, you know, each committee separately, making sure that we know who's on which committee, you know, how many would be in favor of option one, option two, option three, given their current thinking.
Okay.
Can you do first choice, second choice, third choice?
No. What I, what I, but I would like, I think that's a good idea. I was hesitant towards it, but I really think it's important that we decide definitively about if we can't, if we do not get a consensus for rollback or add, that we're gonna do status quo. And I say that not because, and I will tell you, you all will know this, I'd prefer status quo over rollback, okay? Because if we don't, I don't wanna end up at a meeting until one in the morning.
Yes.
With no consensus. And I don't wanna leave you with no calendar. I think that that does a much greater disservice. So with that caveat.
Yeah, and I think when you meet with the other two chairs.
Yeah.
To plan the meeting, that you should bring that up and see if they're on board with putting that out there, that if there isn't consensus, then we stay, we're, what we're, you know, past practice.
Yeah.
For another year.
All right. Yeah, yeah, okay. Does that work for you guys? Would, would you guys be in favor of a straw poll?
Sure.
Yeah, because, I mean...
It's a good starting point. And I think, I think the thing that's tricky is that this is so hard and people change their mind, but I don't wanna be there till one either.
Right. And, but also, I mean, people will probably come to the meeting with their minds made up, you know? And it will save a lot of time, a lot of angst, uh, because you don't want me to get all rattled up and start doing that thing that I do sometimes. And, and, and I don't wanna do that, you know? And so I think it may be a more, because if we find out, for example, that none of the three committees have a, um, uh, have a majority for either rollback or, or the other.
We're not.
Then let's just go home. Because we've discussed this ad infinitum.
Yep.
You know?
I think that makes sense.
All right.
And I would just suggest, you guys had rich, rich conversation, Beth and I sat through Dover's rich conversation, which I think had some different points. I would recommend just watching it.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's a good time saver.
Right, because you, then you can hear what everyone has said because, you know, again, as they were talking to each other, just like you were, they were, their members were changing minds. And I think there were some good thoughts that were presented that night that you guys haven't brought up that I think are worth listening to.
Thank you.
And that was March, that was just like a week ago?
Just last Thursday.
Last Thursday.
Yeah.
Sherburne was Tuesday. They didn't, they didn't engage.
Yeah. I don't think you need to watch that, but I would definitely, it was like, it was like maybe 35 minutes, um, but it was, I think that.
Thanks.
All right, good. Um, are we, is anyone want to add anything else?
I just wanted to ask if the three proposals are set or if there's any way, would that be crafting language in the meeting or is that sort of like set?
Let me say this to you. I'm gonna answer the question two ways. Under Robert's Rules of Order, anyone, um, can make a motion. Thank you, Dawn.
And it could be amended.
And it can be amended, exactly. And so technically, I could get up and say, let's just add Lunar New Year. I'm not going to do that because I don't believe that that's, I, I, I don't think that that's the right thing to do. But one could do that, okay?
But that would have to get approved in order to be.
Well, but there'd have to be a motion, there'd be a second, there'd have to be a motion from each committee, okay? So, so the answer is, under Robert's Rules of Order, yes, that's possible. However, I guess there's no however.
If the group comes to some consensus about an amend, something they want to add or, you know?
Yeah, exactly. A better example of how that might work is if, if we did agree to, um, add holidays, are we going to, what are we gonna do about Good Friday? And that's something where there'd be probably motions from the floor and amendments and that kind of thing, okay? But...
But we would cross that bridge.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. But yeah, you, and, and any member has the option of doing that, but then they, they're gonna have to get a motion and a second from the two other.
From all three committees.
What?
From all three committees.
Yeah, exactly. From, from all three committees. And that's, that is a, gonna be a tough, um, and, and here's the reason, other reason why I think it, it's tough, because we've been at this now for a year and this is where we've come down to. And Lord knows, there've been a lot of good minds at trying to come up with other solutions and these are the solutions we've come up with. So I can't imagine that there's gonna be something put out there that's gonna be better or different from what we've got here.
Well, for instance, if we were to say, keeping the status quo and adding in, you know, education about the holidays.
Ah, I see what you're saying.
Or...
That's a, yes.
Adding no homework nights.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is that something that we, as a school committee, have a vote on?
Well...
Yeah, no, you have a, you vote on the calendar. You can charge the superintendent to find ways to address X, Y, and Z, which goes back to where I started. Again, I live in this world, so, um, you know, it's fresh in my head, but just to remind you, the recommendations coming from the Calendar Task Force were, um, educating the students and staff about the holidays as we go, um, looking at athletics and extracurriculars and how they're impacted, making sure that everybody understands the policies and they're, and they're followed, um, and maybe better defined. And then the Christmas Eve being part of December break.
And, and, but those are things that we can...
Right, you can support.
We can support and suggest.
We can.
We don't.
We don't have the authority to, that's, that's.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could recommend it incorporated into best goals or the strategic plan when it's being.
Right. So I completely forgot, we actually have, we have more on your chain.
I get that now.
One last data point, can I?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thinking about the people who do run this district, uh, that, which are the building leaders and the leadership team, we, we had a conversation very similar to what you had tonight and Dover had last week and we had with the Calendar Task Force representatives. Again, same points made. And then we did a anonymous poll and it ended up being a complete split, even split between the three options.
Wow.
Yeah, and that shows you, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased about that. And I'm pleased because that shows you how difficult a decision this is.
Yeah.
You're the perfect solution.
No. In fact, I would say there's not even a really good, there are bad things about each. There are downsides to each, let's say that, okay? And I, that, that's a train I can get on board.
The lights are fading.
I know, it's, all right. So are, is there anything else anyone wants to discuss? I'm pleased, I thought this was a lovely conversation. I thought it was a productive conversation.
Helpful, very helpful.
Um, so, all right, so let's move on to our action items. Um, I have to pull this up so, because, so I didn't say the motion correctly. The next item on the agenda is the annual school committee vote on Massachusetts School Choice Law. There is a memo in your packet about this. Does anyone have any questions about it before we, um, or, you know, what, do you wanna say a couple?
Sure. So this is something that each school committee has to vote on every year. Sure. So, this is something that each school committee has to vote on every year. Um, in the past, all three committees have chosen not to participate as a school choice district. Um, it is an opportunity, should you go down this route, to invite students who don't live in Dover and Sherburne to attend our schools. And we are reimbursed, um, five thousand dollars for each of those students. Having just lived through the budget, um, cycle, you know that we spend over twenty thousand dollars educating each of our students. So, it in no way compares to what our taxpayers are putting forth to support our kids. I think it is honestly an opportunity, and Dawn has made this point, um, numerous times, for larger school districts to gain revenue when they have thirteen sections of ninth grade and, or forty sections of kindergarten and they can give up some seats. Us think so tiny, one or two students can shift, you know, how many sections we need entirely. And I've heard from the committees over the last several years, the commitment to adding the number, adding to the number of Metco students we have. And so, we have been careful that when we do have an open seat that we know is not gonna tip the scale into needing another section or another teacher to invite another Boston student to come. So, that's why the committee thus far has voted no every year.
I just have a question. The, is it five thousand dollars no matter what town you're coming from? Okay, I always thought it was what that student, like, say, Natick, for example, whatever they spend per student would come to us.
It's a flat rate, school.
It's flat, okay. That's interesting.
Other questions?
Nobody's, no. I guess that means Natick would save money by outsourcing their kids?
Yeah.
We would.
All right.
Yeah.
Just curious about that.
And some of our students do opt into other districts. We have students who live in Dover and Sherburne to go to another school because they have more programming and more roots to success.
So, the other school has to be the first one.
You could be a sending and receiving, like, you, you could get your cherry sheet if you're a district and you could have sending and, um, receiving cost.
So, may I have a motion that, uh, to have the Dover Sherburne Regional School District not participate in the school choice program for the 2024, 2025 school year?
Mark Healy, so moved?
May I have a second?
Colleen Burt, second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that is unanimous. So, we are not going to participate in the school choice. Uh, okay, can you, um, I'm sorry, Denny, well, I'm sorry, Denny's not here, but not because he can't, um, explain this. Um, could you give us, um, an introduction to what we are, what we are voting on with regard to the School Opportunity Act?
Yeah, and then we'll revert back to the HR director after that.
Oh, God, I forgot about.
It's up to you. I'm happy to do that one first, whichever.
Yeah, let's do it first. Oh, oh, no, yeah, let's just do it.
They're both fairly quick.
Okay, let's do H R so we go in the right order.
Okay. So, um, as you know, we had two studies done in central office, both recommended that we, um, have a Director of Human Resources. Uh, in order to kind of pilot and experiment and be, um, fiscally responsible, we realized that the town of Dover was also looking for an H R person. So, we, um, sat down with their, their town administrator and said, what if we split someone as a pilot? Um, and it ended up being that we would have a point six or sixty percent of that person and the town of Dover would have forty percent. You all agreed to that and signed the agreement with the town of Dover Select Board or Selectmen. Having lived through it now, we have realized that our needs were greater than what, um, that position could offer. And the town of Dover's needs were greater than what forty percent of that position could offer them. Given the individual in that position and her expertise around municipalities versus the school environment, Dover has asked that they take her on one point O. Um, and Dawn and I and the executive team are in support of that. What that leaves us right now is a point six in the budget, which we need to think about what that looks like moving forward. And again, having lived through it this year, I think that there's been some learnings about what qualities and skills we actually need in that person versus what might have been recommended. Um, and so, I think that we need a little bit more time to think about, um, how we use that funding to fill in the gaps of what we actually need when it comes to making human resource decisions. So, the vote would be to, um, dismantle the agreement with the town of Dover and allow them to take the human resource.
Exactly. Be terminated as of March fifteenth.
Excuse me?
You will terminate the memorandum of agreement as of March fifteenth. And the Selectmen in Dover have already, um,
Voted.
have voted on that.
Yeah.
And then we will launch our own search.
Yeah, thought process about what that position entails and search.
Can I ask you a question? What do you, um, envision the process going forward? Now, I'm not asking you what you want in an H R person. I'm asking you what you envision the process to be, because it, it appears that we, we've believed that we need the H R function. What are you, what are you thinking?
So, in the short term, there are certainly projects that are one-time projects, or at least a project that will buy us five years until we have to revise it, like an employee handbook, like a Title IX handbook, like streamlining our job descriptions, that are one-time things. And we have agencies available through us, through, um, some of our collaboratives and consultants that can, we can pay them X dollars and they do that project and then we can move on and feel good about it and revisit it X many years from now. Having lived through this year with four significant personnel situations, I will say that our need is not around recruiting, hiring, and onboarding staff, because our principals and our central office staff currently have a great flow for that. And in fact, when you add someone to that mix, such as an H R director, it's an extra cook in the kitchen and communication and things start to fall apart. What I think we need is expertise around, should there be a concern? How do we document that, investigate that, develop a plan moving forward? Um, we have had the opportunity to rely on our, um, our, our counsel for that, our attorneys, and they're wonderful. Sometimes I think they might be a little bit too much and there might be a sweet spot in the middle where an H R director and having the right skillset could probably do that without having to call an attorney, but I think that hasn't been decided yet. That's up for discussion. So, uh, we need to have some conversation as a central office team as to what our needs are. Um, and, you know, having spoken with my coach about that this morning, you know, one of the ideas is perhaps having someone on retainer, who has that skillset and isn't a point six, isn't a one point O, but has a retainer that any one of us in central office can call them, but we need that extra level of expertise, but not quite the level of an attorney.
Yeah, I, I have to tell you, it's like you read Mon Mon. Um, yeah, that's, that's great.
I would say it was worthwhile. You know, I wasn't really for this. And it was worthwhile to see, but it was that it was too many cook, I mean, it was, it was very frustrating. And I think we also realized that there's, we really needed more of that school expertise and that, um, caused a little, you know, we didn't know what to delegate and, um, how to do that. So, you know, it, it was great. I will tell you now, though, that Dover has a full-time Director of Human Resources, had some experience with us. All of our onboarding for Dover employees, we're, we're sending to Town Hall. So, it's a better experience for that employee, because we'd have to send them to places. Um, and we're, you know, we'll walk that path with Sherburne as well. But if we can delegate some of that little work to within central office, that's a huge thing. So, we had a little mini trial with that and, um, so that was worthwhile.
And, you know, it, it reminds me, like, when you first start, when you graduate from college and you have your first job, and then, and you hate it and then you move on to the next one, you know better. Even though it was a horrible experience, you now know better what you want.
Exactly.
And I'm not saying this was a horrible experience.
No, not at all. It was, it was educational and.
Exactly. But it was clear that you need something different, you know? Not that it was bad, but, but sometimes that's really valuable, okay? So, that's, that's all good. Okay. Questions, comments?
No, makes sense.
So, can I have a motion to terminate the memorandum of agreement with the town of Dover with regard to the human resources professional, um, as of March fifteenth, 2024?
Colleen Burt, so moved.
Uh, can I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
All in favor? Uh, the vote is unanimous. Um, okay, so now let's go on to, please explain to us the, um, Student Opportunity Act plan.
Sure. So, someone you, you know, um, our interim superintendent Cathy Smith, um, back in 2018, worked hard to, uh, develop the Student Opportunity Act, which is, what it does is allows, um, districts to obtain additional funding from the state to support, uh, subgroups of students who may not be making progress, uh, equivalent to their peers. So, every three years, we have to develop a plan. And it's, it, it's a good, um, opportunity for us to look at the data. You know, we do that with MCAS, we do that with several of our, um, dipsticks and benchmarks, but really sit down and analyze, how are all of our groups of students doing and how can we better support them? So, Denny has done that with all of the, um, the school leaders and the, um, student support teams. And we have come to realize that we still have work to do in support of our students with disabilities, our low-income students and our black and brown students. That said, we don't wanna develop another plan that's different than the strategic plan and the school improvement plans. So, what we're doing is highlighting within those plans that already exist naturally because we were already cognizant of our needs, um, the supports that will be in place to support these populations of students. One, at the regional level, is around social emotional learning, and that's adding, adding the third counselor to the guidance team at the middle school. So, that will have more individualized attention for students for three years. It'll have that consistency and we'll really get to know our students and what they need. Um, it's continuing to develop that dashboard that you keep hearing about through Open Architect so that we can continue to monitor all students as well as the groups of students, much faster than having to, um, do what we used to do with the old, um, DSS dashboard. Um, and then making sure that we continue to communicate with the parents. So, as students come in and out of intervention cycles through the MTS S model, that we're making sure parents are aware of how we're trying to support their kids, what they can do at home. Um, and then onboarding that new program, we've talked about Parents Square, where instead of getting emails and text messages and phone calls, everything's gonna come through one source. And so, hopefully, that'll clarify things for parents. So, the money that we get from the Student Opportunity Act, although small compared to other districts who have, um, greater populations and less of a tax base, we appreciate it because it will support those programs that we already wanted to do.
Excellent.
Great.
Um, questions, comments?
I, I have one thing. Um, some of the research that came out from the Metco, um, research drop that came out recently, um, they found that there was, um, sort of a discrepancy, you know, the achievement gap, um, as to where the kids were going to college. So, they're graduating, but they're not necessarily going to the elite schools. So, one of the recommendations was more college counseling around the elite schools for Metco students. Um, another recommendation was extra tutoring around standardized tests. So, I hope that, I don't know if some of this funding can be funneled, but that, those were two, um, recommendations that, um, we heard.
Yeah, I think those are great ideas and I'm happy to bring them back to Denny and the team.
Mark?
Yeah, I think it's, sounds well thought out and makes a lot of sense to align the plans. And I was wondering about the middle school guidance counselors, if they're with the students for three years, is that, I don't know if this is known yet, but would it be alphabetical by last name or is it kind of assigning kind of specific needs to the guidance counselor specialty area and things like that?
It's even better than that. It's by grade, because there's three grades, six, seven, and eight. So, there'll be a sixth grade counselor, a seventh grade counselor, an eighth grade counselor, some of which they, they used to have at Needham and they roll up with the kids. And then when there's team meetings, instead of trying to attend two times three grades, which are six team meetings, they only have to worry about sun and moon, fire and ice. They only have two meet, team meetings to attend when they collaborate with the educators on those teams. So, it's really opening up a lot of time and opportunity.
Okay, thanks.
Kate?
Do you have any?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, uh, can I have a motion to approve the, um, the Student Opportunity Plan for the Dover Sherburne Regional Public Schools?
Kate Potter, so moved.
Uh, may I have a second?
Mark Healy, second?
Uh, all in favor? And it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, so, can, do we have consent items?
Yep.
I didn't, yeah. All right, good. So, and there are two information items. Our next meeting is May seventh. No, our next meeting.
It's just your group.
A region, but April second is, um, the joint meeting.
And April twenty-sixth, joint.
Yeah.
What?
And April twenty-sixth.
Yeah, joint, 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 yes.
I'm thinking April second, we should start around noon, though?
Yeah.
But just keep in mind that that two elementaries are meeting at five-thirty to talk about the math curriculum that they're recommending. So, they're gonna get a head start before you get here.
Yeah, but yeah, let's, um, all right. So, I think that we can adjourn. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mark, so moved?
Colleen Burt, second?
Uh, all in favor?
Right.
Okay, so we're adjourning at seven fifty-eight.